Call the meeting to order at six eleven. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, sorry about the technical difficulties. First order of business is to approve the agendas or motion to approve the agenda. I'd like to make one addition under new business A to add a yearbook stipend to that. It's supposed to be there. With that amendment. Someone tried to make the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve with the amendment.
Meredith, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries. General public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to speak tonight? All right, Adam Parker.
It's actually Alicia Parker, it comes up as my husband's, but I just had a question about underneath the principals report, the FAST bridge reports. If, is that public knowledge as well? Like can the parents go in and see the test scores as well, or is that just private?
So, I'm sorry, we didn't hear all of your comments. You were talking about the FAST bridge reports?
Yes. She asked if it was public information or private information in regards to the results.
Students, results, no. The information that we have here.
So, individual student reports are available to parents of those students. So as students take those assessments, teachers typically do print off the reports and send them home or share them often at parent teacher conferences. As far as the report that the board has.
Overall scores are still embargoed.
The overall scores are still embargoed.
We have sent out individual scores and that's to include.
For FAST bridge, not.
Can you clarify what embargoed means?
Well, that's not for FAST bridge, I'm sorry. Embargo basically means the state is supposed to hold all the cap scores. So while you can receive like an individual score for your child, you can't see the overall scores with school. The state is not releasing those. Open that up here.
Do you have an idea of when they might, or if they will?
They will eventually.
So we're meeting with Zoe Saunders on October second, that's more concerning.
All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight? All right, moving on to consent agenda, we have the minutes from August fourteenth and warrant three sixty and three sixty-two. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make that motion.
All right, motion.
One thing on the minutes. It had, tonight's meeting is nine fourteen. That's proactive.
Okay. Well, with that one change.
Just quickly, I got some feedback that Chris, it's kind of hard to hear since the mics are right here, so just. Someone was having a hard time hearing you.
All right. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with that amendment to the minutes, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously.
Can I ask a question? So I prepared those minutes. Do I go in and pick those, or?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll resubmit those. With the change?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just that one change. Okay. Contract recommendation. All right. So we just have most professional staff horizontal move. So, anyone have any questions? If not, we look for a motion to approve contract recommendations as presented.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by George. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion carries unanimously. Superintendent.
Most of this information here is just the board's rule, so there's a question, we're more happy to answer. A lot of this is about just the following, great starts in SU, Carol Cora will talk about that more during the first reports. I do want to highlight each year at our fall in service, the GRCSU recognizes two outstanding educators each year. And this year, Steve Canan, the teacher, the most archerings of Wall Street Unified National School District, was recognized as one of our GRCSU's outstanding educators. I just want to personally congratulate Steve, you know, there's a lot of great educators in the SU, and I think Steve is a very good candidate. I think those who outside the program personally can attest to that. But at least I did want, I'd have to ask you to congratulate him. He will be recognized along with Lori Elliott, who's a Rutland Tower School Special Educator, at the ceremony, the University of Vermont on November seventh. It's a nice ceremony which invite the outstanding educators from all across the state of Vermont. Have a nice conference reception, have a nice ceremony which they read off the names, have a nice speaker, and then from that pool of outstanding educators, they will then choose a Vermont Teacher of the Year. That's I've done that evening, it's done later on that year. So I just want to personally congratulate Steve on that. And then, like I said, the rest is just to make sure only if I'm more happy to answer any questions we have. I know there's, I guess I'll just, I know there have been questions around PCBs, that is in the news a lot. There has been no adjustment to the timeline for PCB updates. We'll look at twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six for our schools. So, as we, if there is change to the timeline, we'll let you know. There have been some alterations to the prioritization of schools and prom mitigation or mediation, but that does not impact Middletown Springs Wells at this time, so.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Special congratulations to Steve Stone, yes sir. Okay, principal reports. Cory?
So we had, we've had a great start to the school year, a pretty smooth start. We started off the year with an in-service combined with Wells. Just finding that it's really nice to get our two schools together and to collaborate on the work that we're planning on doing this year. We are working on a book club together this year to improve literacy practices and to make some, some small, identifying small changes that can have some larger impact on student achievement. We actually had our first faculty meeting today, virtually between the two buildings, so it was nice to see the teachers come together for that. Let's see, other things, this year, Middletown Springs, we're really excited to implement the Student of the Month around character traits the teachers had identified after last year, that they really wanted to find a way to celebrate our students. And so this was one way that we came up with. So we're, we're really excited to, to start having monthly assemblies around character education and then acknowledging students and inviting parents in to celebrate students for that as well. So it's just a very brief overview.
All right, any questions for Cory? All right.
Reiterate a couple of things that Cory had said. We did have a wonderful start with, I think it really works for our staff to get to know each other and kind of blend the communities for us to be able to do our beginning in-service together. I, we actually split, I did the lower level, she did the upper level group today for our book club, kind of book, book study that we're doing, and I was just telling her when I got here, it was really, it was great listening to the two staffs talk to each other and kind of work together to come up with the ideas that we're looking for. We did have our open house last night. It was really, it was really wonderful. It was a little nerve wracking at first because and people were, came in kind of a little late, and so I was getting a little panicky because it was not, there weren't very many people there right at five thirty, but then I ended up serving over a hundred ice cream sundays, so that would, we, we ended up having a really good group come in. And, just an update on our playground, we were able to take out three pieces and with Esser funding, we're able to install pieces in mid-August, and we have three more coming that will be installed in early October. So if anyone's looking for something to do, feel free to join us. Yeah, we really have like three coming in and it's not going to be that bad.
Okay, because the GE does it for nothing.
Oh.
They're the ones that took the playground and face the first time around.
Okay.
We called them, and there's a good, a piece of the GE that will come in and do all the work for it completely, assemble and everything, and pay for any, any materials needed.
Okay. Yeah. And I think there's just a couple of other initiatives we're pretty excited about. I know that we have struggled in the area of math, and so we've been, we've instituted a math fluency program where all the students for fifteen minutes in the morning go to every available adult in groups working on the skill that they need to be working on. And the kids, we started it this week, are really enjoying it. And so, yeah, I mean.
We do that in Middletown as well?
The, the math games? No, so we are approaching math in a slightly different way. So we have for the second year in a row, a subscription with All Learners Network online. They provide a bunch of professional development opportunities beyond what's online. They partnered with the state of Vermont this year, so we're really going to take advantage of some of those opportunities to work on professional development as a staff and looking at our math block structure and identifying, again, areas where where we can make small changes to make big gains.
And for us, that was an area that we really felt we needed just as a foundational piece.
Right, right. And is that also on the computer, Carol?
Nothing on the computer. It is all in-person working games with teachers.
And to clarify, All Learners Online is online for teachers, not students. That's, that's a good clarification. It's not online for kids, it is online for teachers. Yes, it's resources and PD, so Amanda's got her hand up. Hold on, Amanda.
Sorry, I didn't know if you were saying hold on or go. I just have two questions, if, I didn't know if we were ready for questions, but wondering if with both schools, the anticipated enrollment, if those numbers ended up being actual or greater than or less than what was anticipated in both buildings? And then my second question is more of a Wells-directed question. Can we look at, I know that we're struggling with after-school program, I know that it was up and running in Middletown, which is awesome, but still struggling with staffing and Wells. Can we look at what the difference would be going back to what we did last year versus continuing trying to get somebody to hop in with Boys and Girls Club for Wells?
So regarding anticipated numbers, I can answer for Middletown. The numbers that are in my report are reflective of the students that we currently have enrolled.
As are the ones from Wells, and it's, it's almost exact to the number that we had anticipated. I think we're one off.
And I think we dropped a few students.
And the after-school program is a good question. I don't have an answer for it right now, Amanda, but we're still looking, and I asked last night, and I understand there's a person who may be interested in helping out, but I don't foresee us going back to what we had previously because, just financially, it doesn't make sense.
So I know we're, so Middletown, we're down an interventionist, for that was half paid, I guess, by Esser funds. I'm curious if we have budget for that and if we're looking for a replacement, and then for Wells, we're down a counselor, and that's been a while, right?
Yes.
Is, how do we, how do we find people to fill those positions and also the facilities director, of course, but are we, are we actively looking for those positions? I want to make sure we fill those as soon as possible.
So the interventionist position here at Middletown has been posted. Certainly it was budgeted for this school year, but we have not had anybody interested at this point. So we will just keep it up, you know, we push it as much as possible. And facilities director, you know, we've got feelers out, we've got school spring, we have Indeed, we've talked about other ways where, you know, you know, how are people who have that skill set, where are they looking? How can we reach them? So, and then we've talked about other, other possibilities. If we can't fill the facilities director position, you know, how do we move forward and, and what resources do we have that we can tap into?
And it would be similar with the counseling position, it's just there aren't people out there that are really applying and and they have, they do have to have a specifics, like Cory said, specific skill set and a certain degree. We could even hire someone who was looking to be in the field, but they have to have a certain degree in order to be hired in that position if we wanted to look at a provisional.
Okay.
And we just haven't had a lot of applicants.
And is that on, on you guys to find that person, or are you getting support from the supervisor?
I feel like we're well-supported in that way, that it goes out on school spring and actively look other places. I do have to say, like with Cory talking about the, it's interesting, the facilities director, because I think that's not necessarily a position that someone's going to look for on school spring, which it was posted on Indeed, so they are giving us opportunities to, and helping out in that way.
And additionally, at the SU meeting, all the vacancies within the SU are usually part of the board materials and the facilities director and all these other positions.
Are they also posted on Indeed? Or just on the school springs?
I think teaching positions or licensed positions are typically just on school spring.
Beyond Indeed? Or is that, I wonder?
To my knowledge, I believe that they're cross-posted automatically.
Amanda's got a question.
Sorry, just to clarify, Carol, you, when you said about after-school program and it just not being financially possible, do you think that maybe the reason we're not getting somebody in Wells is, is there a pay difference between what is being offered this year for staffing with Boys and Girls Club versus what we paid last year, or is it just overall programming expenses that you were referring to? I guess I'm just wondering if the reason we're not getting people in Wells is because Boys and Girls Club isn't paying what we were paying, and that's why we don't have the same people. Like, are they paying less?
They actually are paying what we paid. It's not a lot of money. Oh, Louis is going to answer that as well, okay.
Yes, so, so Boys and Girls Club rates are higher than what our after-school program rates were in Wells Springs. So our, our rates were fifteen dollars an hour for workers and twenty dollars for the director. And I believe theirs are twenty dollars for the director and sixteen and seventeen for counselors and junior counselors. But it's my understanding, there's also a, as of, I think it was about two weeks ago, there was zero to very few kids signed up, so I don't know if that's has changed in the last two weeks, but it wasn't just a staffing issue, it was also, there was very few kids signed up for the program. And Carol, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you had staffing issues last year as well when we were doing an in-house program. So you had issues constantly finding staff.
I, I feel like Wells had a lot of staff personally from me picking my kids up. I guess in response to not being signed up, I didn't sign my children up because there wasn't a program to sign them up for if it wasn't staffed, maybe other families feel the same. I just, I was under the impression that when we switched it, it came with staff, I didn't realize, so that's all. Thank you.
Something before, just about potentially raising the rate for substitute teachers. Because I know that's a struggle for both of our schools. Last year, I'm sure it might be the same. Again, I think I was told, maybe like Chris, that they're still in negotiations, right? And I'm just wondering, I know, like, just talking to a friend in Manchester, they raised that rate for substitute teachers, like seventeen seventy-five, and that was something that they did, I guess, sort of the fall year, so since we always, you know, now I shouldn't say always, since we've been consistently running a surplus the last few years, maybe we can look at making that pay more competitive.
Or maybe a cost difference.
Right, and we are currently in support staff negotiation.
Right.
And so that does limit what we can do with our subpay, and we recognize the need to increase subpay, and we understand that, and so hopefully we can resolve, and it's our support staff, you know, CBA settled, and then we can address the sub issue as well.
And how the negotiations have been going on for a while, Chris, do, do you anticipate that being kind of wrapped up soon, or is it something that?
We have a meeting on Monday, so we'll.
Yeah. I'll go to Louis first. That's the touchscreen thing.
So, so I, on the sub-rate pay, I have asked that the SU board discuss it at the next board meeting.
Amanda?
Sorry, just, I guess my final thing. Louis, could you bring back the cost difference between last year and Boys and Girls Club? So come October, November, if we still don't have something in place, we could take a look at our funds since we did have a surplus and maybe see what we can put in place to make things possible for families. I know it's been pretty hard and we haven't even had a full week of school yet when Wells doesn't have a daycare to bus to. It's not like Rutland where families could sign up to send their children somewhere. We don't have that option here. We have to find our own people. We don't have a public daycare. So when we were expecting that and we're told that we would have this program, and then now we can't staff it, maybe we could look at the cost difference to make something happen in a couple months if we're still in the same spot.
I mean, I could bring back any information the board wants. However, if there's people that are interested in working in our program, they could also work for the Boys and Girls Club. So, I mean, i- if, if we're able to find staffing, then the Boys and Girls Club should be able to find staffing. They're not paying less than we are, so it, it's not a wage issue, it's just a lack of staffing issue. And that wouldn't be, that shouldn't be resolved by us bringing it in-house.
No, I think the big thing that would be resolved in-house is who could attend, because we could also have kids that were younger as well. But we can, we can maybe just add it for another time to discuss.
The same kids that would attend our program could attend the Boys and Girls Club program.
But not preschool. Where they could last year.
But we made a decision that preschool would not be attending after-school programs.
At least three families, I guess, in the whole town.
So licensing, oh. Licensing is different. There, it's a lot more strict. And so I know that that's the reason we had to get rid of, of our license, which then impacts subsidy for families, so it had this trickle effect. So, yeah.
And the Boys and Girls Club isn't able to provide that kind of level of care, or?
Well, again, they would have to then apply for a pre-K license, that limits the number of kids that they can have, it's so they would have to have that, that same license, that's a lot more strict. So.
All right. Well, there's no other questions about the principal's reports. We're going to move on to the FAST bridge reports.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
Yeah, I mean, we can does, does everyone have, we only have one physical copy here, so maybe we would everyone's got a computer in front of them, so. We're talking about this data presentation, so.
I don't think we publicly screen shared the data last time. Our numbers don't, I don't think our numbers really allow us to. We could do the slides, like what are they? Yeah, and then the analysis, we could do that, but. So we have the FAST bridge assessment results from the spring, and it, we've got data from the fall to the spring comparing them. So just a very quick overview, FAST bridge is, we give the assessment three times a year as a benchmark assessment to see where students are, to screen students for students that may be at risk. And we can use that data to pull students into EST, EST to provide additional services as needed. So students in kindergarten and first grade take, take the assessment, it takes about five minutes per content area, so about five minutes in math, a five minutes in ELA, and it's done one-on-one with the teacher, so very quick test, like how, you know, how many letters can you identify in a minute type thing? And then once students get into second grade, it's split, so some of their assessment is done one-on-one with the teacher, they read passages to look for fluency and accuracy, and then once students are in fourth, fourth grade, it is all done on the, on the computer, so they still have that portion that's looking at fluency, and then they have they have the A reading assessment, which is going to be more of that multiple choice adapts with them based on how their answers are, and that's similar in both reading and math, so K one is one-on-one with the teacher in both areas. And then there are a few slight differences from two to twelve. So I guess maybe just, you can just kind of talk about some of the areas we had done on slide fourteen. We had just kind of found some areas of promising growth and identified some areas of concern, and then highlighted our plan for how we're going to address some of those concerns, and then if there are questions around the assessment itself, we can, we can answer those. So we noticed there are some pockets of nice growth in the area of literacy specifically on the early reading assessment for those younger students, and then at Middletown, we saw auto-reading as well, our older students did very well on that. And then again, in early math, the, the students who are testing one-on-one with the teacher, we saw some nice growth there.
Yeah, and I think, I think looking at the scores at, at Wells, one of the things we've really, we worked together this summer and kind of re-establishing the EST process for our schools to really be more specific about it, and that for. And that for us is an area that we fell short in last year. So we're hoping that we're going to be able to provide more more structured, regular supports for all of our students in both math and reading since we started the year with an interventionist. And we do have a high need for that support. We did implement a math fact fluency program. And we're also doing a couple of school-wide reading goals that already are are taking off in a very positive note. So I think that with the book study that we're doing, our teachers are feeling pretty supported and looking like they're going to be able to really focus on making growth this year.
Some areas of concern, I think that we have have some some common concerns across the buildings. Our reading scores, we did not see the growth that we would like to see in the second through sixth graders as measured by a reading. So that's the, they have thirty to sixty questions, it adapts based on their answers. And then in looking at the A math assessment, we saw an increase in the students who are in the high-risk and some risk categories and a decrease of students in the low-risk and and advanced categories that we would, we would want to see the opposite. So we're seeing for whatever reasons, their scores decreased from the fall to the spring. So that was certainly concerning for us. So the next steps for us, we've implemented the literacy book club for all of our staff. We have included our pair educators in this. They participated at our back-to-school in-service. They're provided with all of the readings that we have our teachers do, and they've been invited to our Wednesday faculty meetings, though it is not a requirement. But we do have that invitation. We actually had three of them join us today, which was really nice. So they they work very closely with students who need support and and so they're an important part of this work. I had already mentioned earlier, but Middletown is going to be diving into the professional learning opportunities offered by the All Learners Network to really look at our math structure and what we can implement to meet the the needs of a wider range of students. And and Carol's got the the math fluency on her end to address math.
And our teachers are also accessing.
Oh, they do also have access, yeah, so. And then a big conversation that we've had is is about just the area of reading and getting books into the hands of kids and getting kids to enjoy reading that that reading can be fun. And it doesn't just have to be because your teacher told you to pick up a book to learn. So at both schools, we've implemented drop everything and read or dear is what we call it for short. And so we have a built-in time in our schedule every single day where every single student and staff member is reading. They drop everything and they read so that not only are our students, they there are very few limitations to what they what they can do. So they they have, you know, a wide range. We're not going to tell a kid, no, you can't read a graphic novel. So as long as it's school appropriate, they can read it as long as it is a physical copy and not on a device. But they also see their teachers modeling it as well and other adults throughout the building. And then one of the last things that we're doing at both schools that we're really excited about is there is a program called One Book, One School. And so as an entire school, or in this case, two schools, we are going to be reading the same book during the same time period. And we will have activities for the kids. We'll be looking to get the community involved in that so that we have a shared goal and a shared experience around literacy.
And I was just going to say, as the other part of the drop everything and read that we have put into action is we have some of those emerging readers and they have chosen adults in the building that they would like to buddy with. And so like Corey said, everyone is reading during that time and.
There when we did the book thing where we had a competition, each class wrote a book, read a book as a class. And then we did a kind of like a game where.
Oh, you did Battle of the Books.
Battle of the Books. You were there, weren't you when you did that? That was pretty effective.
Yes. No, and I said already, we're doing a book challenge where the kids have chosen personal goals. Some classes have chosen goals. And as a school, they determined that they think we can read two thousand books by June. And we're already at a hundred and twenty-seven. So and and some of the students that have come in are very proud of themselves that they've already read one or two books. And so so we're hoping that it's all going to take off and just kind of support our students. And they are pretty excited about reading. I've had a lot of comments from parents.
Right now, let's put the teachers to the school, still school and do one book and that and that on the books work. It did work really well.
Do you find that since the test is timed, that it can be a barrier for some kids? Because when I get like these reports from my kiddos, when I have discussions with teachers, they're like, okay, it's just this one snapshot. You know, how they're doing overall. So, you know, one could look at these numbers and be kind of alarmed, but I know it's one, you know, one area.
Yeah, so the the A reading and the A math assessments are not timed. Students have as much time for those as they need. The other ones, the A math and A reading are not timed. Students, it typically, they say it averages about thirty minutes for a student, but it can take anywhere from fifteen minutes to forty-five minutes or longer, depending on on your student and their needs. The other assessments that are timed is because they're looking at fluency and you can't assess fluency if you're not timed. But, you know, certainly I it it could potentially impact a student, especially if you have a student with anxiety. So we really work with students of, you know, like this is, you just do the best that you can. It's it's okay, you know.
I was gonna say question on sort of these columns. So I we have, we have high risks, we have some risks, and we have low risk. Could I read the tabs? High risk is two grade levels low. Some risk is one grade grade level below or?
No, so I I mean, because this is a nationally normed assessment, what they're doing is they're comparing them against their same age peers against a- a- across the country. They're not measuring them against a standard necessarily. So you can't really say high risk is, you know, this kid is, you know, if it's a third grader, you can't say they're performing at a first grade level based on this. Necessarily, it's just compared to your typical third graders at this point are here. And.
In terms of assessments, could we as a board get that into a thing in terms of how the classes are stacked in terms of the, you know, I understand we have to meet kids where they are. And I'm just curious if we're talking about school consolidation, if we have a second grade class that is a big spectrum and the other school has a smaller spectrum. That's a challenge we have to sort of meet potentially or or discuss or think about in terms of consolidation, like what the effort is involved and and bring a big disparity of of learning together. What this shows me is there are some some gaps between the schools that are that are significant in some areas. So so I know we're trying to get away from doing combined classes, but in a sense, maybe we are doing combined classes if we're merging two schools that have different abilities. How do we get those kids up to speed? And I understand it's not black and white like that and, you know, kids, kids are where they are, that's fine.
Right.
But just a concern, I'm wondering if we could see, see any information on that in that sort of sense. And I don't know what that would tell us there. Maybe just in terms of preparation, like how we how we potentially buy classes in the future, if it's a grade level system or something.
I mean, I I think, I think this assess or the, I don't want to say the specific report, but I think you could probably get that information from here. It's not going to tell you, it'll, it'll, I think you could compare, you know, one class to another class if they're in the same grade level, but you'd have to look at the data by class. Right now, this is by assessment because our class sizes are so small. You know, you've got the data by 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 assessment and not class size. Whereas if you probably looked at like just the kindergarten class, you you might be able to tell that information.
Could we look at this and and just combine the classes between Wells and Middletown and just see where students are at a grade level?
Yeah, I don't know. That's a, that's a good question, just because I know that with the way the report works, like I see Middletown scores, she sees Wells. I'm not sure if there's a way, there might be. I'd have to ask, like Lisa would have, Lisa Madison would have larger access than we would. So I'd have to ask her if that's.
And is that helpful at all? I want to, I don't want to make an issue that doesn't exist, but like I understand we have to teach our kids.
Right.
Is there a scenario where we combine the classes and there's just so much disparity that
Right.
we have to move away from a grade levels? And I don't know for a lot of people move away from grade levels, but a different sort of structure to teach kids where they're at, to help them progress and prepare them. If that's that's adequate, we and all that in their favor.
Right. I mean, I think regardless of which school, you're always going to have classes that have, I mean, we see it. Right. And and, you know, that you're always going to have this very widespread of of where kids are achieving.
Is there an opportunity there? Or is that an opportunity to help help? Or is that, or is that, is it better to have that spectrum in the classroom?
No, I I'm personally, I think it's nice to have the spectrum because then you have, you have students who you you know, I mean, they 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 have different strengths in different areas, right? So they're able to help each other out. They're able to be models for each other. You know, your kiddo who may be struggling in math may be excelling in literacy, right? And so now they may be looking at another student as as a model for math and they've become the model for literacy. So I don't necessarily think that separating kids by ability is what is best for kids.
Okay, that's helpful to me. I'm not an educator, so that's.
I would think that that's one of the pluses, nothing about having larger classrooms.
Correct.
A whole lot more going on for both those on the upper end and lower end.
Yes.
Amanda's got a question. Hold on, Amanda.
I was just going to say, Matt, another thing I think to look at when we're looking at these scores is like, for example, right now, according to the numbers, Middletown has three sixth graders, Wells has eleven. And they have six fifth graders and Wells has thirteen. So the number of kids in each class that's being added in is different as well. So I think that that might be some of what we're looking at too. So I just wanted to point that out, that some of the kids literally, classes are literally double or a third of the other.
So for the low-risk category, would this be low risk of meeting or?
No, so high risk, yeah, so high risk is it would be the student is struggling more, low risk is they're they're still struggling, but not as, not as significantly. So here, so here's, they they defined it on the first page. So high risk, very unlikely to meet grade level goals. Some risk, unlikely to meet grade level goals. Low risk, likely to meet grade level goals. And advanced, very likely to meet grade level goals.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Yep, sure. So high risk is very unlikely to meet grade level goals. Some risk is unlikely to meet grade level goals. Low risk is likely to meet grade level goals. And advanced is very likely to meet.
All right. Any other questions about the FastBridge reports? All right, we'll move on to the continuous improvement plans. Let's see, what's that? Yeah, I think that'd be good. So these were shared last month in advance, so they're in the drive. I'm not sure if you guys want to share anything about these or.
Yeah, no, I feel like the the plans really align with the needs of what our students like the needs that we we have talked about with, especially for us, math and reading and the E S T process and getting the supports and utilizing our interventionist to the best ability that we can. And that's just kind of reflected in the plan.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, so mine's up. I guess I'll go first. Um, so at Middletown, we have three goals, two in the area of academics, one in math and one in literacy. So in the area of math, we're looking at teaching math instruction and intervention using research-based strategies, materials and programs. We're really focusing on the layer one and layer two instruction for students to increase student growth by ten percent. And we would be using FastBridge, the VIT cap and classroom assessments as our measure there. Oh, I'm sorry, that's page five. Yeah. And so we've, we've outlined some changes that we would implement to assist in meeting that goal. So looking at our structure for math block and expectations for, you know, how many minutes? What is, what does the structure look like? Creating a consistent schedule for E S T. One of the pieces of feedback we got from parents that looked at this was making sure as we're moving forward with E S T, we have increased communication with families. Providing P D, professional development for staff. Creating structures that allow staff to vertically align the standards. So like what what comes before you, what comes after you? And then increasing our collaboration time. So we've really utilized the the P E teacher over at Wells comes over here and teaches health one day a week. And so we've, that gives teachers two specials on Friday. And so we've leveraged that so that one of those specials teachers are meeting with the counselor. And when we're able to hire an interventionist, they would be meeting with that interventionist once a month to talk about students and strategies that can be implemented in the classrooms. Our literacy goal is similar. So looking at literacy, instruction and intervention, making sure that we're using research-based strategies, materials and any programs. Looking again at layer one and two to increase student growth by ten percent as measured by FastBridge, VIT cap and classroom-based assessments. And the changes that we would be looking to make are very similar to math. Just making sure that our expectations are communicated very clearly to staff around literacy block expectations. Building time into the master schedule to focus on building a love of reading as a whole school. Again, that consistency with E S T and increased communication with families, looking at professional development for staff, increasing collaboration, vertical alignment of standards. And then our safe and healthy schools goal, we are looking to increase collaboration between teachers, our school counselor, students and administration to develop professional development that will increase positive support geared towards the needs of students and teachers in order to decrease classroom behaviors. We would like to see a ten percent decrease in behavior referrals and a ten percent increase in Sabers, the Saber screener, which is through FastBridge, it looks at student social emotional well-being. And so we've to to work towards this, building in one planning period a month for collaboration, which we've been able to do. And designating one faculty meeting per month for social emotional learning collaboration and P D. And then establishing expectations in a procedure for when and how to communicate with the counselor and administration around student behaviors and concerns. We we did quite a bit of work with that last year and just really strengthening that. And then providing professional development for staff around when, where and how we talk about students, how we differentiate support for a variety of needs and providing professional development for teachers on the check-in, check-out system for students that utilize that. And then also providing professional development from for staff and students around self-regulation strategies such as fight your flight, non-verbal hand signals and mindfulness. And I will say that actually came from our fifth and sixth graders last year from the work that they did with Up for Learning. And then in implementing a consistent schedule for S E L lessons within the classroom.
Any questions?
Uh, social emotional learning. You know, there's a lot of acronyms in education. We just assume you all know them. We get confused sometimes too.
Do you want me to go ahead?
Yes, please.
Okay, so our our first goal for Universal Design is we started the year with a master schedule so that we can have collaboration between our classroom teachers, the interventionist and our special educators. They're providing services within the classroom. We do have a high need and so we want to make sure that we're decreasing the number of students that we do have that need EST support and also that are referred for special education. We're really hoping to decrease that by 10%. And I think one of the things that was really helpful for us is this summer, together with Middletown, we had an EST team that is developed as a leadership team. We met for, for two days particularly and developed materials that are readily accessible to all of our teachers that have every intervention that they could need to implement in their classroom. All of the materials are ready. Um, they're labeled there in binders that they can just go in and access because I think sometimes accessing what they need from FastBridge was a challenge. Would you say that's?
Yes, exactly.
Um, and so we were able to get all of that done this summer. And I think that already our teachers are feeling like a little bit, they're feeling a little bit better about this goal and how we're going to be able to proceed. One of the next steps we're doing in our faculty meetings is, as we're finishing fall data is looking specifically at groups and with our interventionists and with our special educators, looking to see how we're going to put groups together and what kinds of interventions we're going to be able to support in the classroom. And hopefully one of the goals is less pullout as well. The second goal is about, really about both math and reading again, and it's about academic proficiency. And so it, it's going back to just being able to support our students and relying on the MTSS process and having those people in the proper places and the positions that we need them in. The interventionist position is going to be key for us and we actually did increase to two special educators. Their caseloads really require that. And so um, I, I feel really fortunate and we've been able to make it so that they can be K to three and four to six. And so they're very specific to where they are in the building and it gives a better option for collaboration with classroom teachers and being able to have that time. As Corey said, we have one day a week, ours is on Monday, where they have a regular special of art and then they have help with our PE teacher. And that's a time that they use to collaborate and and get that time to make, do planning as well. So really, we're, we're just really looking to increase our scores and support our students and fill in those gaps that they have. We do have a high number of students on IUPs. And we have, right now, we've already started our EST process. And our first, I think, four meetings are already full. Reviewing the plans that we had to implement last year and we've probably talked to about six families each time. So just to kind of give you an idea of what our caseload is. Um, our third goal is going to be a little more challenging. It's about safe and healthy schools and um, it's talking about collaboration between our classroom teachers. When we wrote this, it was with access to a school counselor, which we do not have. Um, but we are utilizing Ryan Lawrence in that capacity. So Corey has generally generously said until we can fill that position, he is spending his Wednesdays in Wells and he is providing SEL in the classroom to our teachers.
And Ryan was the position that we?
He does help here.
Right, okay, right.
Yeah.
Okay, last year.
Yeah. And if at any given point we needed to split him, we, we definitely would. But he's, he's really it, it, it's, it's working out really well. And I think he's establishing relationships within the community. That's really helpful to our kids. We do have a second plan in place to support our kids where, you know, they've identified their people. And we have a system in place that allows them the supports that they really need since we don't have a full-time counselor there. Um, we are looking to, as Corey said, it's kind of the same goal, you know, looking to um, decrease the number of students that we see for office referrals and um, increase the scores on our screeners. We have a high need. So. But I think like just starting the year, we're feeling pretty optimistic, so.
Is either school utilizing the wellness program in Polk County? I'm not exactly sure of the parameters around that. I'm just wondering if that's somehow a support to you and Corey?
Are we allowed to share that kind of information?
Or no?
Because I mean, that would be pretty specific.
Right.
Yeah, I would say that that's.
Schools in SU that, that they are currently revising um, the referral process as well as students checking in and checking out for persistency support. So there's a need, yes, and student, students from Middletown also have access to that program.
All right. Any other questions about the continuous improvement plans? So it's, it's been quite a few years since we've actually had the CIPs come to the board with COVID. There were changes to the process, so. I think we uh, we go back to um, it's a board approval of these. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the continuous improvement plans.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Matt. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously.
Can I just put a plug in?
Of course.
Can I just say thank you to the people that did provide feedback on our, our um, CIPs? And that uh, I know at Middletown, we're going to look to start the process sooner. So if that's something um, that you are interested in being part of that team, um, please reach out and let me know. I'm sure Carol feels the same way for Wells. Um, but we would love to see community involvement.
Yeah, we actually had a person from the community that was a past board member reach out to see if she could be part of the process.
Nice.
So.
So part of the community improvement plan process does create that plan or?
Yes, and I think it would be more like um, reviewing what did we have, where do we want to go, what are our goals, things like that. Yeah. So.
Great. All right, uh, thank you both. Um, we're going to move on to finance. Um, so I guess Lewis is up.
Uh, so there was the budget timeline was in the packet. That's just an FYI at this time. Uh, we were discussing it in more detail at the next meeting. Uh, but the intention is for boards to sort of know in advance what the process and timeline is and to come prepared at the next meeting to discuss the budget process and really what you're looking to see during this budget cycle, priorities, parameters, stuff like that, things that uh, that you're come ready to discuss what you want to see happen during budget, the budget cycle this year.
Okay. That's okay. So I actually did have a um, a report, a financial report question. In the see if I can find it here. It was in the uh, expenditures report. It was the uh, um, excess spending for special ed bill backs. Um, if I can find the page. But basically my question was um, uh, there wasn't anything in that line budgeted. And um, since there was a SU, uh, there was a special ed surplus, wouldn't that cover that expenditure?
Are you, are you looking at the current year expenditure report?
Yeah, the one that was in the materials.
Okay, can you, are you able to identify the page that you're referring to?
Page four. Uh, SU purchase specials, specialized disallow.
Uh, so that, that's part of the assessment. I think it's actually, actually that you pointed out. I think that's just a misposting. I believe it should go to a different. Um, it's a purchase service line as part of the regular ed bill backs. Uh, that should be a regular ed. We don't do the disallow anymore. Uh, so I'll make a note of that and just check and correct that. The special ed disallows were back when we were doing the time studies and with Act 173, the disallows went away. Uh, so that's part of the, the bill backs for those employees that are uh, SU employees because they're covered partially through a grant and the rest is billed back to the local fund. Uh, and it probably should have gone to one of the schools' purchased services and not that line. So I can make that correction and, and report back to where that went next month.
And then the other question I had, um, thank you though. Um, and if you just wanted to just uh, we had the audit in our materials last month. If you just wanted to, if there was anything to report on that to the board.
Uh, there was uh, the audit is, it was a clean audit. Um, there was no changes to the financials that I provided to the board at, at year end. Um, the one thing that comes up uh, quite frequently and, and Wells Springs as well as other districts in in the SU is just student activities and making sure that there's all the proper paperwork in the student activities account. So whenever there's a deposit or an expense to, to make sure that that there's the whole paper trail to support those expenses. Because those go through a different process and we're not seeing those to year end, uh, there's not the same oversight at our level. It's really counting on the school level, front office and administrator to make sure that all of that paperwork is there. Uh, but there was no, no adjustments or anything like that, uh, or no uh, financial impact or findings. It's, it's just a, a note to, to, to the schools to make sure that they're making sure that the paperwork is complete.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for, for Lewis? Okay, um, okay, we'll move on to the capital maintenance plans. Those are in the drive as well. Did anyone have any questions about plans?
There was a, I have to fill in the water treatment. It was like eighty thousand. Is that right for Middletown Springs?
So those are all just estimates. Um, it's not an actual quote. Um, so we have been having issues with the water system, I, I think for a while now. Um, so we had Advanced Water Works come in to kind of take a look at the system. Um, so we had estimated on the really high side. Um, and according to what Advanced Water Works has told us, it is not as bad as we thought. So we are now waiting for a quote to find out really where are we and then taking the next steps with depending on what that quote is, um, what we have to do.
Is it, is it water treatment or is it like a whole well or?
It's water treatment. So um, we have a uranium filter. And so that needs to be um, rebuilt. Like it's working okay right now, but it's, it's reached, it's reaching the end of its life and so they have to refurbish it. So they're waiting to hear from the company that does that.
I know we do separately, I know we do water tests for Middletown every month and it's like five hundred bucks or whatever. Do we, we don't do that for Wells, correct? It's because Middletown had a failing test many years ago or do we do it for Wells too, a water test?
Yes, it's just.
I didn't realize, I'm sorry. Thought it was just the middle.
No, no, we do do it at Wells, um, actually.
Just we contract out differently with who does it. Yeah, uranium is.
Okay.
But no, the state requires us, I think probably because we're on a well to, to test monthly.
Okay, so it's not getting around that monthly?
No. Nope.
Yeah, I should see it. It's pretty fancy system.
It's five hundred dollars?
Per month?
Feel like I see multiple entries for the water testing.
And it may be, it may depend on, it may depend on what we're testing to, I'd have to go back and look at those numbers.
Really comprehensive test on that place because originally anyways, um, it's more like around two seventy to three hundred.
Yeah, I, I can go back and look. I don't think it's typically around five hundred, but I do know that we had a couple of tests that um, the well had run dry or not the well, the holding tank ran dry over the summer because uh, I think we had some leaky faucets. And so it was explained to me that the, the holding tank loses water faster than it can fill up um, in situations like that. And so that because of that, we had a couple of tests that came back positive. And so it required multiple testing to make sure that we were um, in compliance with what the state was requiring. So that may have been an increased bill.
Okay.
I did have a question. I noticed um, on both of these um, plans, it did, doesn't have anything about the HVAC system, but in the, in your report it had.
It's just looking at what we're going to do with the grant.
And that was my question. Is it, is it, is that kind of being prioritized because of the grant or?
Yeah, I'm not sure that we would put um, heat pumps if, if we didn't get that grant. So.
Kind of based on the if of it. If we get it.
And how much does that grant cover? I think, I think you.
It's a lot.
I want to say we talked about it before.
We did and we had numbers in there before. I'm, I'm sorry.
I can look it up. I can look it up later. I just was curious.
I'm not sure. I mean, it was a pretty large.
It was a large amount of money.
But it also included more than just the HVAC system, so. But like, I want to say the, the HVAC system for Middletown is maybe around eighty-six thousand.
Okay. Expensive.
Yes.
Did anyone else have questions about the capital maintenance plans? You or Lewis want to add anything to it? I think uh, I think it's, it's pretty good, but um, I'm pretty sure things can change as well, so.
I just think as we develop the budget, just we have to take this into consideration around priorities and basically around uh, items that are marked as high and being low and and what's coming down the pipe. And I just want to, Matt, you talked about that eighty thousand number, that anything over forty thousand dollars, uh, we had to have to bid. Um, so it's, it's all American triggers, it's a bit long, so.
And I remember when we did the water last time, we had a matching rent, I'm pretty sure.
I, I, I'll go back and get back to all that.
Yeah, because it might be worth it to see if there's some other money um, available for that through the state.
Right. Yes. And I'll answer for you after.
All right. No other questions, we'll, we'll move on to old business.
Sorry, sorry, I was gonna say, I just, last month, the water testing was six hundred ninety dollars.
And that was the month that we had to test multiple times because we had some tests that came back with numbers that were high.
All right. Our community forum. Um, so we left off on this, um, a possible. So we left off on this, possible that scenario.
Yes. So I know, Matt, you had asked about if this scenario, which would be one of the schools would opt to shut down and tuition, why did this one remain open? So the long, the, the short answer is no, we can't do that. There's no sex or language allowed. But it really looks at how Wells Springs was founded and partly founded that the ethical education for students both Middletown and Wells. So if that would happen, that would be both schools would have to look at dissolving, but they can't do one. So that would not be an option.
All right. So we're looking at, and I, and I guess what I'd like to, to do tonight is to basically set these in stone for the public forums that we're going to have as far as what scenarios we want to at least suggest. And just make sure that by, you know, putting these out there and talking about them that, that we'd potentially be considering them if that's the path that communities as a whole would like us to explore, I guess. So we have the four scenarios. And we'll just open up for discussion. Anyone else want to add anything? You know, I'll say that you know, just looking at the, the four scenarios. I'm not sure if scenario four is something that we could even consider too. I mean, just as in order to close one school, it would be in a unanimous decision of the board and of the town. And to do that for both, I'm not sure if it's feasible, I guess. And you know, I guess my question is, would the board even consider it if we're gonna go before the communities and say, these are suggested scenarios? And if that was a path that we were to go down, like, would we actually consider it? So that's kind of where I am at on these situations, these, these scenarios. Like if we're going to talk about these realistically.
Can we have a better idea maybe from Louis, what these savings mean for the taxpayer? What's the sense?
We could work on that after October if you'd like.
Yeah, I think that's, that's going to be the question because I don't, I honestly don't know that even saving the other $30,000 really.
And I just want to clarify. Purple Agreement states that to close a school down, you need a unanimous vote of the board, but a positive vote. So not a unanimous vote of the town, you need a majority of, so if the board would say, we're looking at closing Middletown Springs, you'd need a majority in that town. So the Doc Spring says, no, we're not doing it, then we're not doing it. Does that make sense? You need a unanimous vote of the board, but only positive or majority of the town, which the school's located.
Oh, yeah. No, you're right. Yeah, I misspoke. Yeah. I didn't mean unanimous.
Eric, logistically, can we fit all of Wells, which has a 81, into Middletown, the school itself? I mean, logistically, can we? Can we fit that money?
I think that was a, a question that had come up before too. And yeah, I think that you know, there's, there's a lot of questions and things to figure out. But before we go, you know, exploring, you know, let's say scenario, the scenario three. If we're going to do that, that's where we'd figure out, you know, the capacity for each school. And that's going to be a process all of itself. And, and I think the only reason why we're doing this is, you know, so that way we, we don't want to put all of our resources into figuring, you know, scenario one, scenario two, we need to find one and explore that.
We have the community's support.
Yes. The community's.
Because if we don't have the community support already, then we usually go out as. There's got to be a tolerance.
So in thinking of that option, can we in the next, you know, little while, see if that's even logistically possible to fit, you know, the Wells spring or the Wells students in Middletown? I'm just thinking, you have 81, right Carol? I think we have 40 something.
52, 133.
Right. So can we even fit them all in one building? If we can't, obviously.
They fit all in Wells people.
Right. So then closing one school wouldn't be just closing one school, they'd close the Middletown. Because if logistically, you can only fit, right?
I don't know. I mean.
That's, I guess, I guess that's an important part of the question. But it's not the only part of the question.
Right. That's going to be a question that's going to come up, I think, when we have a community.
It's good information, though, in the capacity of both schools.
But you also, you want to forecast out, you have to, the students currently, but you also have to look at if there's enrollment increase. Can, can that building sustain? So also you're not, first it seems to now. So you have to really look at what that projection would be. Now, I know we've seen a lot of decline in enrollment, but.
But the savings are a lot. People in the state of Vermont want to increase our population to 802,000 in ten years. Yes.
Start building housing first.
Sorry. I think the other question too, that we need to look at with the pre K and one through three and then four through six is like how many students in, maybe you guys know this answer, but what is the maximum number of students we can have in a classroom with one teacher? Because currently our third grade combining Wells and Middletown has 25 students. So are we even allowed in the state of Vermont to have 25 students with one teacher? I thought it was like 20 or 21. So therefore we would still have classrooms that we would need like two third grades, for example. So I think we need to confirm what that maximum number is first as well.
We do. Amanda, we do have that. That is in our class size policy. So we have that established. So as when Louis, myself, Cory and Carol started looking at projections, we did look at those numbers and you're right, there are certain situations where you may have two second grades, right? You're going from, you know, a second grade in Middletown, a second grade in Wells, you still would have to have two second grades, even if you demand. So we still would have to adhere to those numbers or because that just throws out, unless the board made, the, the, the board made a decision around class size, which I, I wouldn't recommend because the state still is recommending exactly what we have in our policy.
What are those numbers?
You may not see a savings in terms of staffing, you know, because we're, you know, still have the same number of second grade or third grades. You may also see us move away from a combined classroom, like a three, four classroom would become a third grade classroom and a four rated classroom potentially. So. Right. So there are a lot of different scenarios.
What are those?
Scenario two, though, both second grades in your exam room be in the same school.
Potentially.
So they could do stuff, they could still do things together.
Yes.
And the teachers could work together. That would be a positive, I think.
In that scenario, yes, you'd have two second grades in one.
Does anybody know offhand what that size costs, the, the size max is?
Yeah. So K through three max is 20.
Okay.
And four through twelve is 25. And our policy states that when we hit that, we, you know, the board may consider other options. Doesn't say we trigger another teacher will be hired, but typically what we look to do is we look at, do we provide parent support? So if we're at 21, do we provide like a parent support for that classroom teacher? But if we obviously get to like, you know, you know, 30, then we're looking at.
That's the SU policy?
Yeah, that's, yes. Yep.
From what I understand from talking to an educator, at third, there's studies that say when you get past, when you get to 30, then student outcomes start going down.
Thirty what?
That's student, student.
We, we would never put 30.
Exactly.
I, I don't think, I don't think anyone here.
So that's good.
Whatever entertaining that. I think we're comfortably fine with.
That's great. No, that's good. I mean, in terms of going to the community, saying that we're, we're well underneath that number, that we're looking at sizes of 20 and 25 at max with potentially support for the teachers. I think that's.
Yeah, I was a classroom teacher, 37 students in a classroom once. It was not a deal. With, with students by AEs and without. So it's not an ideal situation, but that's, we would not do, we'd have to go back to that.
But yet you throw 64 in a bus fire purple and no help. Thank you.
I, I can, I can understand.
And they all have IEP. Some of them have one on ones when they get off the bus, but they're.
Who's decision would that be?
Like, puts this working on a bus?
With IEP, he's spending one on ones the second they walk off the bus?
The administrator. Who does not drive for our?
No, I. Not yet. I'm a last year. So.
Okay. So getting back to these scenarios, are people, or is the board comfortable with the four scenarios we have on here to talk about it or public forums? We want to amend this in any way.
With additional information regarding this, you know, total number of students we could fit in one space, correct? Ever better understand that's correct?
Yeah.
Keep these four scenarios.
And what these, what these savings, quote unquote, mean tax wise?
Sorry, it was an accident. I'm good.
All right, go ahead now.
Yeah, let's not emphasize that scenario, but someone may ask, what if you close both schools down and you've got some information to tell them, but also like that's us and two towns all agreeing to do that.
Yeah.
Which is not.
And I think the fact that we, we have that here and we've talked about it over the last few board meetings. And we've, we've discussed it. So it's easy to say that, you know, we've looked at this and this is the potential savings. You know, maybe a potential, you know, actual property tax savings. But there's also that consideration of being able to, to close both schools. And yeah, it, yeah, I'm for it either way. I just wanted to bring it up as, you know, there's something to discuss.
Say if the, if both towns decided that number four was the option to go to close both schools. Is there any way that we would forfeit our right as Middletowners and Wells to the ascending district? Or is there any scenario that the Department of Education will go, come down and say, both, both schools are, you know, both schools are closed, now Middletown goes to Poltoni? And, you know.
I, I think that, that's the million dollar question that a lot of us are asking as they, you know, we have this, this forum that's being held, it was committee with interim secretary Saunders, which hopefully we'll see in 2026, they said that we'll start seeing the results. What that means for small schools in state of Vermont. And you're right, anytime the state could come down and sit there and say, you know, we're going to, you know, have two high schools in Rutland County or we're going to, they could do that.
And eliminate.
And so that's just the reality of, I think, as, as we, but we have to plan as if right now that's not going to happen and, and if. But like you said, we'll know more probably the next year or so to where the state is starting to head. But I, I know Governor Scott has sent out memos, others have signaled around. More and more people are talking about consolidation. And so I sent a superintendent's meeting last week when really the discussion was around the state of small schools in state of Vermont, like this really means. And there's just a lot of pressures on both sides, just to, you know, to where we're at. So I, you know, but I, so I, we can't predict where the state is going to go, but I think we just have to look at is, you know, how do we as a board, as administrators, still provide our students a quality education, back to a quality education, you know, and, and until a decision is made by someone other than us. So.
I mean, this is kind of our chance to manage this before the state does.
Yes.
You know, and I'm not saying because we take steps that's going to change any decisions they make. But it, you know, if this is going on elsewhere, possibly we do keep both schools, possibly we keep a school. And my reluctance on scenario four is we don't want to scare any families looking for it to move around here. Oh, they're talking about shutting down their schools. That's, that's dangerous. That's really dangerous.
And George, when you look at this, discussion around BOSI's, what's the, you know, regional insurance services? One of the positives of that is, you know, the economy's a scale, you know, allows us to reduce costs and does allow smaller schools to, to exist for much longer. Still saving taxpayers money. So there are opportunities for that, but that's, we're nowhere near. You know, I, myself and Rick Olson over at SAG-A-LAS, I've looked into the BOSI's grant and there's so much red tape around it right now. So. But like I said, there are opportunities for us to, like I said, get ahead of this and, and say, well, we are being responsible, we're looking at this with a chance seriously. But like I said, we, we go back to your question, we really don't know what the state's going to do at this time. We can guess, but you know, I think local patrol is very strong in, in state of Vermont. Like people, you know, these schools mean a lot to our, to our communities. And I think it's, you know, it's, as Eric said, it takes a lot just to get to that point of even getting on the power. So.
I assume this has something to say.
So I believe there was a question regarding what the impact on taxes would be. And so every 50,000 is approximately a penny. And every penny on the tax rate is approximately $10 for every 100,000 of assessed value.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So is there, if that helps?
Oh. So sometimes there's like, I haven't done this in forever, but like, there's like SWOT analysis or different types of frameworks to make decisions, like where you're looking at opportunities, you're looking at, you know, different types of, you're looking at the problem and, and you're, and you're sort of brainstorming. Is there, is it, does it make sense to do that for some of these or similar to how we had our like retreat, have somebody come in and help us do that? Just to sort of get the ones, or are we?
I feel like that's the next step.
Okay. So community gate, the community forum will help us sort of narrow down.
Now and start talking, get people talking about it. I think, I think we'll decide after that what you're talking about would be my. And the facilitator, I mean, we could do it by ourselves and we do.
Okay. Yeah. And I think in our October meeting, following both these public forums will, that'll be our next step is to figure out where to go from there.
Yeah. Cause I see opportunities in some of these and like, I don't know if that's two in the weeds right now. So or worth discussing. If, if we're just narrowing it down to sort of the vacancies of like the vagueness of like, it's going to have a, a money back potentially, which we could also reinvest with students or pocket as a tax, as a tax bonus for, for the residents.
So, so what is, so this meeting, how are we going to get information? How are we going to get? So, so what is, so this meeting, how are we going to get information? How are we going to get? Feedback. We're going to ask people to write things down? We're going to talk? I mean. Uh, I, I think that's kind of what we need to discuss here.
Yeah. And exactly, and I think part of the, you know, that commit, that public forum is to have that back and forth. And um, that's not a bad idea too, if someone wanted to. Leave comments rather than speaking up, there should be a way to do that as well. But um, yeah.
I mean, and maybe that's printing this out and handing this out to everyone who comes to the informational meeting. And they can write those comments. On that piece of paper somehow, or I don't know, format is the best.
Is there any easy way to get feedback through the people that are on the um, getting the, the emails?
Well, I think, I think the meeting is really what this is.
But they, they think about it, they want to respond.
Yeah.
After the meeting. You know, they're getting the email from, from Wells Springs. Is there a way for them to?
Do emails come to the?
If you sign up for it.
You can reply. It's like, it's, it's sent from a no reply because we don't monitor it.
Right.
But potentially also we could maybe open up a brand new email for.
A Gmail.
A Gmail account. I'm sure that's possible, just, just on this topic. Close it when we're done, or?
Well, we could also. Have um. Well, my first thought was is we could do a, I guess like a poll or something like that. If, it, well, that was one thing I wanted to confirm now too, is this is going to be a hybrid meeting, correct? Obviously.
Advertizing.
Yeah, and uh, so, I mean, that'd be easy to share. Online and then um, print out stuff for people who come in person, but. You know, I agree, either way, we need some sort of way to, for people to provide feedback. If for some reason we run short on time, maybe some people aren't comfortable with speaking up. I think there's a lot of scenarios that um, someone couldn't make it.
So you are planning on offering like say two minutes? Like amount of time?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Um, and, and honestly, I've been thinking about how to um, you know, uh. How this meeting's going to go, how it's going to be structured, because I've been unsuccessful to find a moderator. And uh, so if anyone knows anyone, but uh. So, you know, my thought was is that um, you know, one of two ways, we can go over, present the scenarios, talk about the scenarios. Leave a specific amount of time for feedback for, you know, each scenario. And some time at the end for potential additional considerations and um, you know, or just take it one at a time. So, you know, again, I think we had set an hour and a half for each meeting. So that way we're not dragging it out for a significant amount of time, so.
I think this email, however we figure out, we should have a place where people can mail their address to.
Okay.
Because they may go home and talk to people or think about it, or think. But they're willing to share via email.
But you want to, you want to put a timeline on it too, right? If we want this before the next regular board meeting.
Yeah, so our, our, our next meeting is the, like the week after our.
Week in a day, so. I don't know, a whole week, or the end of the week, or something like that. But there's two, there's two meetings.
Yeah.
Two meetings. I almost think you should wait a whole month, really. We're not going to be making a dis- definitive decision after a week after the, these two, this informational, I mean. The most, hopefully we can come up with is to, to do what Matt is suggesting. And, and feel good that people are going to want to participate in, in an actual brainstorm.
Yeah. That makes sense. Oh, yeah. Uh, go ahead, go ahead, Amanda.
Sorry, um, I agree that they should have a way to respond, but I'm not in favor of creating a new email. I think that just opens up another. Something else for somebody to monitor. I would say Eric's email is the email address that they contact. He's the chair, he can pass it on to us. And then we discuss it at the next meeting. I think if we create another email address, it's just another thing to babysit, in my personal opinion. Um, as far as using what the, the Wells Springs email with, with MailChimp. I'd say maybe next steps, we could do like a survey or a um, a poll with MailChimp, we do both of those options. But again, I wouldn't suggest people respond to our MailChimp emails because those aren't monitored, that's not what we set it up for. We set it up to send information, not communicate. So that's not a place where responses should be, that's why it's set up as a no reply. Um, and then I just feel like we're talking a lot of. Like a lot of op- options, right? Because there's a lot of things that can happen, but I haven't really heard us talk about any of the. The increased opportunities that we had talked about before, like more sports teams because there'd be more kids, so we could definitely have, you know, a soccer team and. Or basketball team, or maybe gymnastics, or, you know, Girl Scouts in both schools because there'd be enough people or. You know, the additional things that can come out of this. I don't think we should go into this forum pitching it like. Oh, our schools are small, we have to change something. Like, that's not our goal with this. Our goal is. We have two small schools, there's a lot of great things going on in both, but how can we make them better together? Um, so I think we should put a little more focus on what additional opportunities can we offer, rather than. Where can we make cuts and what can we change and how much can we shove into one small space? So, that's all.
All right, thank you.
I feel like that's all the next step. That's not this, this meeting. That's all the ideas that I hopefully hear, whether it's from Amanda or from community members. What about this? What about that? I don't know that how much we need to be presenting that as board members. We're, we're going to be listening.
Okay.
Me too, Meredith. I, sorry, maybe I said it wrong. I just, I think that when we start these forums, that's what we should, we should. Say that somehow. We should tell people like. I don't want, I don't want the forums to be. Just all like negative and changes and like cuts. I. Ask people, what would you add? Maybe if we create three questions or something that we ask people at each forum, and one of them be. What would you like to see added to our schools for extracurriculars? Or what would you, like something, we need to give them. We need to start the conversation with the positive things that can come out so that we can move forward, I think. Otherwise, people are going to come to us and maybe not even know. What our thoughts are and not even know where to start their conversations.
The more I think about it, the more I think we should just go in and, and listen, like Meredith's saying.
We missed the first part because Craig switched over my mic. I'm sorry.
Okay. So I was just saying, Amanda, in case you didn't hear it. That potentially we don't go in with suggested prompts or anything like that, so we're, we're unbiased, we're just listening. And we're not, we're not giving any um, implication of like trying to steer the conversation or in one direction or, or the other, just, just be there to listen.
Thanks, man.
All right, any final thoughts? Any um, other suggestions on how we want to uh organize this community forum? All right. Hope everyone's ready. I think it'll be great. Um, it's, it's been a while and it's definitely one of those things that uh, we're, you know, we can actually engage with. Community members back and forth and, and really just um. Hopefully have a, a, you know, positive experience and outcome doing this, so.
We get a good turnout, we get some people in our communities into our schools.
Yeah.
Can we have a, oh, yeah, sorry.
No, that's fine.
I was gonna say, can we plug also the email during that meeting, just the community engagement email?
Absolutely.
Sign up.
The newsletter.
The newsletter.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we, we did open house yesterday and um, yeah, I'll be here next week doing the same and. But uh, okay, all right, so we're going to move on to the school choice fair. I think we're just going to get an update on this.
Yeah, so there's a list of the. The schools that we would potentially invite and actually with Cory having Patricia as her school counselor, going to ask her to take the lead. On doing that, um, but just listing Long Trail, Poltony, Fairhaven, Mill River, West Rutland, Granville, and the Proctor, Rutland Town. Um, looking at a date of October twenty-second. And we would. Potentially do this during the day and we would bus our fifth and sixth graders from one school to the other, and it's about a total of thirty-three students. Together between the two classes, so.
Did you put B B A in that list or no?
Um, did.
So you don't, because it's not high school, I was.
Correct. This is middle, this is middle school choice. So anybody that has a seventh and eighth grade.
Yes.
Which is why Rutland Town is on there.
Right, yes.
So you're going to go?
No, we would invite them here to set up for our students, so we're looking to bring them there. So the day is just like, we've got to start with something.
Yes.
And start reaching out.
All right, any questions?
Okay, what was the date again?
The twenty-second, tentatively of October.
Okay, just want to check people. Thank you. That's, that's a little bit of open also for the parents.
We would invite the parents in, yes. Yep. And once we get confirmed age from, because we've got to reach out to the schools, and we would certainly make sure that we communicate that well with, with families at home.
All right. So we want to do business. Um, let's see, athletic director proposal and yearbook stipends.
Jenny, we'll start with the easy one.
One, yeah.
Yeah.
So we'd like to propose a yearbook club um, at each school. I'm just finding it's um, the. I guess you can speak for yours, but um, that responsibility has fallen on our five, six teacher, and it's, it's a pretty um, time consuming. Thing, um, so we're looking to make it more of a club involving our fifth and sixth graders um, that's um. We do have a staff member who would be interested in taking that on and really uh, pulling the students in. They, they would run it either during recess or lunch or after school. So it would be a, a true club for the kids, not taking away from academic time and letting the kids um, really kind of take ownership of. Outlining what they need in a yearbook, taking photos or reaching out to necessary people to take photos. So just really kind of upping. What um, what we put out to the school. So uh, we want to highlight the sixth graders, but we want to also have it be something that the whole school is interested in.
And again, for our school, we have one person who's really kind of been behind putting it all together, and it can be really overwhelming. Our sixth graders. Has traditionally designed the cover, and so I would say we would probably really look to them. To be part of the club that we do, and I think that I potentially have a staff member that would be willing to do that. But I think it's a great piece for ownership and, and learning exactly what goes into it.
So I think we'd like to request two hundred fifty as the stipend per building that is on par with um, what other. Um, stipend clubs are that we don't host, um, you know, so we've got listed in a previous um. Board agenda, you know, Lego Club, Robotics Club, G O B, Drama, Coral, Harvest Garden. We don't offer those clubs at this point, um, but those are all up to two hundred fifty dollars, so we feel like the amount of work that would go into the yearbook would be worth, worth that.
So is this, this stipend is for one person or?
Per building.
Per, oh, one.
You could not have, no. One person doing both buildings, working with.
No, what I meant was is like if you had, like, let's say, once, like, three people. Working on the yearbook, would it be three stipends or is it just one person per building doing all the work?
One adult per building who's managing the students who are doing a lot of the work. So they're advising the students, leading the students. So the students are hopefully doing a lot of the work and the adult is doing a lot of the supervising and teaching.
And you would do five and six and you would not?
No, I was saying that I could potentially see our sixth graders always design our cover, but. Having this split the way we have it this year, um, I, I think it would, I would open it up to honestly, fourth, fifth, sixth. Just to see who's interested and who would want to do it. Because part of our, part of our strength, like, not the same, but student council is really from fourth grade right now, so. So it's interesting. I think I would want to open it. And it's not a bad, bad skill to have.
Amanda's got a question. One minute, Amanda.
Go. Okay, um, I, I'm not opposed to, to the stipend. I just. Right now, currently, I know Wells has had multiple adults. Um, and it has still been a struggle, like we still don't have last year's yearbook, so. Do you think it's actually feasible that one adult and multiple children would be able to do it without at least two adults? Or I just, is that a lot for one adult? Do you think you need more adults? Considering we didn't do it with more adults?
Go ahead. Quite honestly, Amanda, I feel like it's a great starting point for giving the responsibility to students and having an adult that's willing to supervise that. The, like, there are, there may be. On paper, multiple adults, but I feel like the onus of the whole thing has really landed in the lap. Of like one or two people and, and it's, it is time consuming and I think it's a great way to start moving that project.
Okay.
And just out of curiosity, if. Just knowing how um. You know, the, the yearbook is done at Wells. Does this still allow for like um, additional help? Like, community members or like, you know, if, if there wasn't, you know. Someone who wanted to assist with that.
Absolutely. You won't lose your position.
No, it's not that, like.
Volunteers are always welcome.
Welcome.
No, I'm just curious. So I was just like. It's like taking pictures. All right, so. Okay.
No, you're good. You kind of, there was a lag there, but you answered it. I was wondering about then people still volunteering and. And assisting, and then how would this person be chosen? Is it a staff member within the school, like a teacher, because they'd have to be there during the club, or would. You know, hired photographer get twenty dollars because they showed up at every game, or? Like, is, how is that position decided?
I, I feel like if it is a club that we're going to try, which I think we will, we would try and run it like we run student council during lunch or recess time. I would offer it to staff to, but if no one on the staff wanted it, I would, I could reach out to the community that would have to go through the process of. Volunteering, which would be a paid position, but I would put it out to the staff first. volunteering, which would be a paid position, but I would put it out to the staff first.
Okay. All right. And then, all right. So what do folks think about it?
In favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hold it. Can you make a motion?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I'll make a motion that we support the stipend in both schools for two or $50 for your book.
Perfect. All right, motion by Matt. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion is unanimous. Okay, now the athletic director.
Yeah. So we would like to propose, in, in the past, the athletic director position has been held by one person between both schools with a stipend of $700. So looking at what this individual has done over the, over the past year for me, the teams that we have at both schools, the number of teams that we have and the fact that we are split, we're just finding that having someone here at Middletown do Wells, Wells is not getting the same treatment that, that Middletown is because it's easier to, to manage the building that you're in. It's easier to go out to the field and line it. It's easier to go out and touch base with the coaches. Whereas if you have to drive 20 minutes to Wells, that requires a little bit more. We also felt like the amount of work was more than $700. I looked at, I looked at Poltony Elementary School and what their athletic director was making. And it looks from the board report that I pulled from them last year. It looks like that individual is making more than double what our athletic director was making. Our athletic director is responsible for, and I'm, and I'm basing this off of last year's numbers because I don't think it's fair to compare this year's numbers because we don't have an athletic director. So last year, there was a K to two team or a one-two team, however it was structured. So there was a younger skills-based team in both schools. So that's two. There was an old, oh, yes, I'm sorry, for soccer. There was an older kids competitive soccer team at each school. So that's four teams. And then we saw the same during basketball. We had, you know, younger skills based at both schools and older competitive teams. So now that's eight teams, plus we have rock climbing here. And so when looking at Poltony Elementary, I know that they're bigger with more students, but you know, they're offering a coed soccer team. I think they probably have enough students that they can offer a, a boys and a girls basketball team. So we felt like the work was at least equal to what was being done at those schools or at that school.
Last year?
Yes.
Who was that person?
John Carlson filled that role last year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, you know, since he is a teacher here, it's easier for him to manage what was going on here. And it was a little more difficult. And so he relied on like McKenzie over at Wells to do some of the work over there. So we were looking at the possibility of higher, of having an A D per school and having the stipend be 750 per school, thinking that if, if we're comparing to, you know, another elementary school who's making, you know, 1,500, half of that is 750.
So he wouldn't be potentially like the Wells soccer team coach, which you don't have on right?
We do not.
Right. He would just be the director position.
So he's, right. So he's not a coach. He, what his responsibilities are. He's responsible for getting registrations out. He's, he's responsible for managing registrations that come in, creating the email lists. He's not responsible for hiring coaches, but he does do a lot of networking to bring our coaches in. And then I will do the hiring and interviewing if necessary. He's responsible for making sure that uniforms are passed out and that they're brought back in. He's responsible for scheduling games, for scheduling practices, for scheduling refs, communicating with coaches, things like that.
About putting together a proposed budget for next year. But you would have to approve.
For?
For all the teams. He's going to need new equipment, probably new uniforms.
Yeah, I mean, that's something I don't know if, I, I mean, I think that's something that we could work, yes, he would want to have.
If you hire a new coach in September, they have to buy uniforms and equipment and it's too late at that point.
Yeah. So he does, I mean, we do have a small budget and so he does make sure that he's responsible for the purchasing. He does communicate with me when we have needs so that I can make sure that we have money in the budget. So, so that it, those are things that he has done with me in the past.
I do think I agree with Cory. I think it's very difficult to do it across schools and do it effectively. Even your interactions within and your relationships with the community, you don't have those connections.
So just out of curiosity, you have, do you actually have an idea who would do Wells?
I have asked a couple of people, but because it is not board approved, it is a potential.
Okay, so there are potential people that are interested. Okay, that makes a difference.
Yes. We are a little late on soccer though, so work.
When can you get Adam?
So we're considering, we're considering like a running club for fall.
Uh, I had a question. I lost it. Thanks. Oh, so you, you explained all the, the roles. So my question is, and that was one of my big ones is like, what are the expectations and responsibilities of this? So any athletic director will have those expectations, right? Ahead of time. So that way, when it comes to coach it or not coaches, refs at games, there's no, there's no like gap there, right?
Yes. So we did list out what we would expect. So we kind of took this, the positions that we currently have that are stipends, the positions that we'd like to have as stipends and outlined, you know, roles and responsibilities of those individuals so that we would have a clear idea between the two buildings. That if this is your position, here's what is expected. If you want to be paid out your full stipend, because that is the back half of the stipend. Is that we have to fill out the paperwork saying, yes, this person met what the requirements were of the job. And purchasing new equipment is actually, I forgot.
To be a ref for that area, it's not that hard.
No, there's nothing to do. There's no requirement to be a ref.
He's not a ref, but he's, he's securing the refs.
No, what I'm just saying, to secure a ref, to be a ref is not that hard. You're a runner. It's easy. I did basketball. You can do soccer.
So when we merged, um,
Yeah, that's not what I meant.
We, this was a position we merged.
Yes.
And to say, also, the responsibilities for the A D were not as comprehensive with what you're talking about. It was really just scheduling refs and games.
Right. So, you know.
And so the other responsibilities fell on coaches.
And or front office.
Well, I was gonna say that's where it's wrong.
Right.
Well, and for Middletown, F F E provided uniforms or they were provided by community members, you know, fundraised. I imagine modern would have been probably provided things in the past to Wells. So this is create, this has gone from, you know, a very small budget to a much, I mean, you've got line items now. I, I guess I've heard that before.
It's a small slick supply line item. It's, it's not a big, but yes, but it's there.
All of that stuff wasn't there. And this is, and, and the schools have gotten smaller. So, not that I'm against this, but that's the reality here.
Weren't Middletown Springs uniforms just purchased?
So we used S R funds to purchase new, so the, so, right. His responsibility or whoever the A D is, their responsibility at this point is signing out uniforms and making sure uniforms are returned. So it's managing.
Job since there and there.
Yeah.
That's not.
But what do we pay?
It's not.
So when I, right, I did reach out when I asked, when I was acquiring about Poltony, I did ask what their A D's responsibilities were and uniforms were part of their A D's responsibilities as, as a five, six A D.
I would imagine they're getting them from the coach though. So, or are they actually chasing down the kids and things?
No, I mean, it may, it may ultimately be the coach, but I mean, it's, it's going to be the A D that's hunting down kids if they're not returning their uniforms. You know, the end of the coaching season, the coach washes their hands.
It would be helpful, especially since we did just purchase brand new uniforms for both things. We've already set up a system of they're numbered, they're who has this. And ours did end up going through the main office. And it was really hard at the very end of it. We didn't get everything back.
And that's where you hold back things from parents that they want.
I know.
Yeah, they can access those online. So that's incentive anywhere.
Lewis has a question. And then Amanda.
I was just gonna say, in, in most of our schools, it's the coach's responsibility to collect the uniforms and the stipend checks aren't supposed to be released until after all the, the A D checks off that all the uniforms are collected.
Do we need a motion to approve the, the 750 for each school or is it not for final decision tonight?
Because this is new money. This, this, this money's not in the budget.
Exactly.
We have to, therefore the board have to approve this expenditure.
That was my next question is how will this impact current budget? And and then yeah, I, I can say that, you know, coaching soccer last year, you know, there were things that were a bit of a struggle. And, but having that that additional support with an athletic director would have made things a lot easier. So, you said 750 for each school?
That is what we are proposing.
Okay. Okay. Any other thoughts, comments, questions?
Just a quick thought. Separately, is there a list of all the common going stipends? Cause I,
It's in your, it's actually in your board.
It's in the, okay. I'll take a rain. Yeah.
Right. And, and Eric had asked where these came from. And that's a good question because when I, I think it's been well before I was here. So, and I know that years ago, there's a discussion around a G R S U stipend. And I do believe the Wells board signed that too, because it did not align with Cora Valley because of.
We, we, we did an elementary school version that was more suitable for our, our school model. I was on the, Amanda, where is it?
Yes.
I think fifteen.
Yeah. I'm curious why the difference between soccer coaches and basketball coaches.
Number of games.
Okay.
Lot more basketball.
Lot more basketball games.
Well, there have been.
Maybe in the past. I did wonder about the discrepancy between those as well.
And, and, yeah, I know, maybe it needs to be adjusted to what the current reality is because that is four or five years, five or six years ago, probably that this is.
Yeah. And to be honest, I don't even remember.
Two thousand and eighteen December.
Yeah. You know, part of the whole process that the whole supervisor.
I remember that discussion about not putting it in the C B A.
Yes.
Okay. So I guess we would need a motion to approve this if that's the pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to approve an athletic director in both schools with a stipend of 700 dollars each.
Seven fifty?
Seven fifty.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay.
You think I'm muted?
Aye.
Okay. All right, any opposed? All right, looks like the motion carries. There we go. All right, thank you, everyone. Okay. And all right, next is facility director search. I think we're just gonna go over the the, sorry, then we talked about it a little bit earlier briefly, but I think knowing that it's a pretty big need, I think everyone will have to to search.
I, I think it is a critical position. I know Matt had asked earlier about support from S U. I know that, you know, I spoke to Carol Corey about this. I did, you know, speak directly with a social director in another district to see if they as a person would be willing to assist and help out to the intro and it was more than willing. So there, there is that collective approach. I, you know, we have discussed a, you know, such a plan B, you know, we can't find someone, what that might look like. And that's which we can bring back to the board in October. But I know that there's potential that there's a candidate that you'll be speaking with and interviewing. So hopefully that'll work out and that'll resolve itself.
Yes. Does this person have to be full-time? Because we did at one point, I recall, and someone that volunteered a lot of their time. It was totally capable of doing it.
And it's a good question to, you know, what the needs are.
You never talk about.
They have potentially a lot of work that needs to be done to both schools. Look at that plan.
Yeah.
That person has the skill of most of that work.
Well, plus the day-to-day breakdown.
I was gonna say, that doesn't even take into account the, the stuff that's not on that list.
Right, right.
Well, that's good to know that there's potential interview.
Yes.
And if I would imagine if we don't have any candidates, then we'll talk about it, plan B later, I guess. Okay. All right. So we'll move on to policy. So we have three policies. Oh, these are all first reads. Everyone should have read through them. Any questions? Comments, concerns?
Am I good? Can you hear me? I'm sorry, it's frozen on my end. I don't know if you can hear me or not, but I was just looking for clarification around the driver's ed policy to define denied or ineligible access to the driver's ed program offered in their school.
So I do believe when we discussed this in policy, that House Committee, it was one of the S U's. When a student says at a school they're denied or ineligible, basically two scenarios. That's the school either does not offer driver's education or they, they just can't take it, let's say they enroll at a later time or for one reason or the other, that it's just not eligible. They, they can come back and take the driver's education, they have G R C S U or take advantage of this stipend. So, but most of the scenarios you'll see are around the, the school that they attend does not offer driver's education.
Can you still hear me? Can you still hear me? I think, okay. I, I'm just concerned, I don't know if it should be spelled out more clearly, like for students in the Wells area specifically. Like what ineligible means. Like I understand, I think, Chris, what you said is that like, you know, maybe it doesn't fit into their schedule or maybe they turn 15 before it's offered in their school because some schools might not offer it until junior year or something. But going forward. Um, but going forward, I don't know, maybe that's covered in the policy part or the procedural part of the policy, but I just want to make sure that that doesn't mean that next year or, you know, years from now, a Wells student isn't eligible for this reimbursement because they didn't wait a year to take it out the school.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I'm sorry. I mean, that's something which the policy, uh, you know, boards have to decide. Uh, I just want to reiterate that, um, by law, uh, part of, being part of the supervisory union that all will a student has access to driver's education within the G R C S U. We do offer summer driver's ed. We know that the timing of that is not always ideal or the best. Uh, but if same students attending a Rutland High School, you know, they, it'll be part of their normal program. What boards have discussed, what their concern is, uh, someone to say, well, I'm gonna go collect five hundred dollars uh, because I don't want to wait till second semester, even though the school is offering that. And I think that's something which we want to avoid because there is a, you know, we are, uh, this is a courtesy and a service that we do in families, uh, that the board doesn't have to do. And so I think that's just what you wanted, you know, there's a bit of a deterrent is that if your, the school you're attending does offer it and you may have to wait till second semester to take that, then you're have to wait. But if you choose to try to take it earlier, then that's on you. That's what an ineligible part of it is. But there are some schools that just, that don't offer us that, that this policy would, uh, kick it. So that is a board discussion in terms of, uh, what sort of financial burden they want to take on, uh, around that. Uh, if they want to open it up, that's, they'll just, you know, you know, reimburse someone, you know, whatever the situation is, that's, that is a board decision.
I just don't want our students missing out on something like Stafford, for example, if their driving time isn't available because they're at Stafford or, you know, another class within school, like whether that be, I don't even know what it might be, economics or, you know, psychology or something, because that's the only time drivers that is in their schedule. Um, I want to make sure that everyone has that equal and equitable opportunity. And if we're paying for the program in the school anyway, but it doesn't work for the student or for the parent to get them there specifically in Wells, because we don't have a bus that gets them back. I think we should still be reimbursing them. And I'm just not sure that this policy clearly spells that out for us here.
Yeah. Yeah. So I remember when vaguely remember when we talked about some of this language and, and number one there and, and, um, it, uh, I understand where you're coming from, but I think, um, a lot of, um, you know, uh, uh, families that will, um, take their students to, um, the private driver's ed for the compensation is because they don't have that direct access in the school that their student goes to. And so that's why it ended up being this language is there. So it, if you're, if driver's ed is available in, uh, your student's school, um, then you would obviously try to access that first before, um, opting to be reimbursed for it. Um, so I, I don't know if that answers your, your questions or concerns, but I think this was mainly designed, uh, when we first implemented this policy back in eighteen nineteen was mainly because, you know, our students that go to, um, uh, uh, other schools, they don't have that driver's ed program.
Including going Grandville for that.
Granville, I think Long Trail, I think Long Trail.
Long Trail currently offers a private program and evidently has an arrangement with, well, uh, Wells Springs. They actually published it. Um, so it's a, but it's an eight hundred dollar program and they make it clear that you have to get the stipend on after you've completed the program for five hundred dollars, which doesn't cover the whole, but yeah, they mentioned the S U, they mentioned Grisley, actually, not Wells.
Right, interesting.
Yeah, I was surprised when I read it.
Well, we have, I mean, we have a policy in place.
Yeah.
But it, the language is a little bit different than this and this it's because it's, it's a G R C S U policy rather than
Right.
um, uh, having districts with different drivers at policies. So, yeah, Amanda.
I'm just not in favor of the ineligible not being spelled out. We might all be discussing this now in twenty twenty four, but in twenty twenty seven, somebody might be like ineligible is, well, they can take it their senior year before they graduate. They just can't take it in tenth grade when they have their learner's permit, which I mean, it's some, there has to be some kind of definition that decides their eligibility that needs to be clear so that whoever is in charge in the future, it's equal across the board. I just think this is a little open.
Okay.
Well, we could always, um, send it back for clarification. Yeah, that's how the board wants to to proceed, um. I think it's a good point, you know, what exactly does a fellow eligible mean, ineligible mean, but, um. Thoughts?
I implemented that policy when it was taken out when I was on the board years ago. And it was a Wells thing that Wells took out and I brought it back. This is about the clearest. From what I wrote it, that's the clearest policy I've seen. I think ineligible would basically just mean you've tried all your efforts, classes, whatever it is. I, I think self-explanatory. I mean, you're gonna try everything else you can get it first before you're gonna go do something different. I think it's, I think it reads fine.
Okay.
For what it's words, I, with what Amanda's saying, I think, cause I remember this discussion that, um, there was concern that people who, um, students that in particular needed to get their license to get to work, basically.
In a lot of school.
Yes, um, uh, would fall into this category where they might turn, uh, fifteen earlier maybe than other students and earlier than when that program is offered. I, I don't know. And so.
Yeah.
That something, something along that has to be cured.
But it was never, it, it was never an issue. Because all my girls, we got all this without, were two out of the three of my girls on this program. And my youngest one was not eligible for a lot of stuff, but it did, it, the way it was written, it was fine. She still got the five hundred, well, it wasn't five hundred, it was only two fifties back then. But, um, she was qualified for it. And it was, and it was nowhere near as good as language as what we have here. So I don't really, that's fine. I think it's gonna cover things and I don't think it's gonna, if you come up with a situation, then it would come to the board for our discussion anyways. I mean, if we, if someone's really gonna abuse and say, look, my kid wanted it, needed it for some specific reason, we're gonna say, yes, if they needed it to get the license so they could get to school. We're gonna say, yeah, we'll do that. That's, the whole purpose of this was to help the child and the parents in the needs and cases where this kid needed to have a license. It wasn't designed to just be abused. It was designed to help a kid if it needed to, because there was not availability for transportation. So I don't think, I think that it'd come to the board if it was a argument anywhere or wise. And the board would decide then. So it, I think it was fine.
Well, so you are correct if, if there were a procedural piece, if we would say no, it is a board policy, it would go before the board, the board could overprove that. No, so the board does have the final say on a decision, whatever it may be. But I think we're looking at maybe one instance or.
Maybe a billion? I mean, I know, I haven't even heard any of this before.
In all these years, we've never had an issue with driver's ed. You know, with this surrounding eligibility, but if this board wants to, and I think one of the things with any policy, there would be a million hypotheticals that you try to work through and so if, if, you know, board wants to look at it, you know, change eligibility to clearly define what that means or rewording that.
The, even if it came up that way, if someone had a problem with it, it'd still come to the board for a final decision. So I think it's good clear writing, but even if someone has an issue, it's come to the board.
I think one of the things we also have to be careful too, is if this is an S U policy that we want to make sure, uh, cause people have, you know, talked about whether Core Valley students are trying to access this policy, it just says, you know, tuition school districts. Um, and I think that's just to be clear, that, that was a concern at Core Valley. That this does not apply to Core Valley students, because they have options. That's, you know, it, cause exactly what you said, this scenario where it only, it's being offered fully during course three or quarter four and say, well, I want, you know, I need to get to work during quarter one. Well, I want exercise this. That's not what's designed for Core Valley. We, they have access during the school year uh, to provide that.
So this is only for tuitions.
Well, it does say, yeah, for us, it's students in tuition school districts. And I think that's just a way to clarify, even though it's a G R C S U, but it clearly states the title. You know, so Wells and Rutland Town are tuition school districts in Ira.
In Ira.
Yes.
Yep.
So I just want to clarify that, okay, you're listening, particularly as people run up against Colton, that, cause you, this exact same scenario you talked about Meredith is so that a lot of families find themselves on.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. See, I know, I, I, I think that makes sense. Um, I'm, I'm fine with that. Anyone else? All right. Okay, so, um, the other two policies, uh, H four and H five, um, I will say that, um, H four, um, is gonna go back to the S U board. Um, so we'll probably, we potentially could see a different version of that policy. Uh, but other than that, um, we'd be looking for a motion for F three and H five, um, to warrant for adoption.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion by George. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, sorry, I was raising my hand for opposed.
Okay, um, motion carries, uh, by majority. Okay. All right. So we have no executive session, uh, public comments, um. Did anyone else have additional public comment tonight? Just about one, like thirty seconds. Go ahead.
Um, so in the flyer for the community forum that went out in the Friday notices for Middletown parents, the date for the Middletown forum is September twenty fourth. And on the agenda, it says the community forum for the twenty fourth is at Wells. Can you just clarify the dates?
Yes, yes, uh, so it's nine twenty four at Wells and ten two at Middletown.
It is September, September is Middletown.
Oh, it's wrong on the agenda.
Yeah.
So Middletown Springs on nine twenty four. And then Wells October second.
Where's the time?
Six. Oops. All right, and then we'll probably have, um, uh, an agenda for the community forums go out with meeting link information, um, later on, so before the, the community, so look for that, um, if you plan on joining remotely. Okay, um, if there's no other public comment, um, our next meeting is on the twenty fourth. And, um, future agenda items, uh, I have on there just as like a heads up is, uh, board work plan, just for you. Um, just to keep it in consideration, uh, what our work's gonna be looking like, um, as far as like agenda items go and. So if there's nothing else, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make that note.
Motion by Matt. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Motion carries unanimously.